Welcome to this meeting of the top select board. Call us when you need to order.
No, we started please.
Thank you. March sixth, two thousand twenty-five. First order of business, the pledge of allegiance, please rise. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands the nation under God, indivisible, clear, free, and just as strong.
Eddie, you call the roll, please.
I will. I'll start with Roland Cuffs.
Here.
Marie Brilliant.
Here.
Ann Callahan.
Present.
Ryan Holmes.
Here.
Matt Dixon.
Second.
All one hundred percent present and our town manager, Mike Walz, is also at the head table.
Great, full table. Thanks very much. All right, next item, town managers report.
So be brief tonight, but we have two reminders of public hearings. Tonight, the comment period ends for the M D O T proposed widening of Route one ninety-six to four lanes. They've been doing this as a on-demand comment period, so you can watch a presentation and then submit your comments to M D O T afterwards. You can go to the public notices link on our website. There's a link to the M D O T site where you can do that. But again, do it tonight because tonight's the end of the period. Also in the public notices section of our website is a link to information on the proposed interpretive panels to be included on the New Brunswick-Topsom Bridge. If you'd like to comment on these comments, they're due to M D O T by March thirty-first. Finally, I'd like to recognize that a beloved employee who will be retiring for the last time next week, Rob Morris, our records clerk at the police department, is retiring from the police department next Friday. Rob had a long career in emergency communications, and after retiring from that, he served in the West Bath Town Office before coming to the Topsom Police Department in two thousand eighteen. He's been our records clerk since then. He's been dependable, steady, and a confident president since as the department went through lots of change over the past seven years. And that's it for tonight.
Very good. Thank you. Orders of committee reports, none tonight. Other comment? Anyone? Okay, thank you. Correspondence? Anyone getting in this week?
You know, Leonard, with several points of concern regarding the climate action plan. I think that's going on.
They should get two, I think. One from Jim Kirkus and one from Marilyn.
Oh, I think it was going from Jen too, which was several well-organized points supporting the climate action plan.
Anyone? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
All right. Just from the agenda, nothing?
Yes, I have an agenda to do. Under old business from twenty-five dash eleven, I wanted to get the attorney's response regarding the attendance policies for committees. Was it a policy in ordinance? Can you give an update on that? And the other old business falling under twenty-eight dash oh eight was continued discussion of informing committees that they should not take public positions on pending legislation or grants, but should submit such letters to the select board for approval. It's been coming up repetitively where committees have been trying to represent the town and we want to make sure that that happens. So if we can continue that discussion, we might.
All right, thank you. Let's see. Consent calendar. Approval of the minutes of a regular select board meeting held February twentieth, two thousand twenty-five.
I have two corrections on the minutes.
Okay.
Twenty-five oh four, the second motion was by Ms. Brilliant, and twenty-five oh nine, the second motion was by Ms. Brilliant.
Okay, great. You in motion for that?
I approve it. You just need to approve it as amended.
All right, motion to approve as amended then.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes from two twenty twenty-five as amended.
Second.
Move in second, all in favor. Motion carries unanimously. Public hearing, none tonight. Unfinished business. Old business on a new business. Twenty-five dash twenty-five, consideration of any appropriate action to adopt the attached Andrews Skoggan River Fish Passage Resolution in support of increased fish passage at the hydro power dam on Main Street.
And Mr. Chip Spies is gonna present. Chip Spies is gonna be.
That's funny. Really, the artist behind him?
Hmm?
Really, the artist behind him?
Oh, you know, I get that question literally every time I speak in public. He spells the name with two S's on the end. I've always wanted to meet that gentleman. Probably some relation somewhere. I think at Ellis Island, they shortened my name. I am gonna try and get my presentation up here. Well, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight and take some time from the folks. Also, I represent the Free the Andrews Skoggan Coalition, which is made up of Mary Meeting Bay Trail Unlimited, Maine Rivers and American Rivers, and also supported by many other people that have worked to bring this awareness, mind awareness of forward subject. So just to give you a little background on myself. Lived in this area for forty years. Actually, lived in Topsom for thirty years, raised a family out on the Catia's Road. Our kids went through Williams County School, the middle school through Mount Aran. And until last spring, my wife worked for eleven years in the health office at Williams County School. So we have some pretty deep roots here. We moved over to Brunswick about eight years ago when our children left the nest. So lived on both sides of the river and lived in that before. So this is a very important subject for me. This is something I'm volunteering on, hoping you'll agree that it's worth supporting. So the Andrews Skoggan River, unlike what some people might think, is just a big, beautiful river. It's the third largest in Maine. It's a hundred and seventy miles long. It runs from Maine through New Hampshire and back down here ahead of Tide and then ultimately into Mary Meeting Bay and joins the Kennebec Bear. It's been highly valued by humans for thousands of years. And but when industry came with pollution and dams construction, that did reduce the fisheries, and that's what we're here to talk about tonight. But one thing I wanted to note was that the Clean Water Act has worked. That was passed in nineteen seventy-two. And this dam that we're discussing tonight was started construction in seventy-nine and was put into active use in nineteen eighty-three. So I think around, you know, seventy-nine, people weren't thinking that much about fish. They were, you know, the water quality in the river was very low and it just didn't seem relevant. I met a woman who grew up on Mill Street or on the Brunswick side. Her house isn't there anymore because when they widened Route one, they took it down. But she remembers sitting there in the evening, cars would drive across the Black Bridge from one side of town to the other, stop in the middle and dump their trash in the river. This was back in the sixties probably, but it was accepted because that's how the river was viewed at the time. We'll also talk to folks who grew up in this town, who rode their bicycles, and their parents said, "Do not enter that river." And so that is something that with public awareness, we're trying to break down a little bit. The river now was moved in two thousand twenty-two from a Class C rating to a Class B rating in terms of the water's quality. And this isn't something that the head of the Department of Environmental Protection makes the decision on, or even the governor. This was passed by Maine's legislature. There was enough data. Actually, data collected over twenty years, Ed Friedman's group, Friends of Mary Meeting Bay, it showed that the water quality was improved and continued to improve. And so now it's rated as a Class B. You can swim in it. Obviously, there's probably some heavy metals on the bottom. I tell my kids, "You can swim there. Just come eat the mud." And it's recovering. So this is an example of back around the turn of the late eighteen hundreds of ice harvesting on the river. While we're looking over at Topsom from Water Street, and so people were pulling ice out, using it for whatever various uses there were before refrigeration, including consumption. And it's coming back that way now. This is, these are all shots that I took. As I said, I live on Water Street in Brunswick. So caught this beaver down below Penex Landing in the spring. That little bug there is called a winter stung fly, and they actually come up through the ice this time of year along the edge of the river. I went and looked today. I didn't see any, but they'll be showing up any day now. And they're an indicator of a clean water source. Smell come up the river, and you know there's smell camps right down below the Green Bridge. There's two on the ice right now. I'm hoping they're still there tomorrow. And people have been pulling them off, but there's always somebody that waits. And many other uses you can see here. And it's a public resource. The river is a public resource. It gets used for many different things, but it's available and it's not owned by any one group or entity. A little bit of dam history. You know, the English settlers and the Native Americans used to catch large amounts of fish at what's called Brunswick Falls where the dam is now. The only thing that limited, you know, preserving the fish, shipping it, was the availability of saw. Lot of salmon, a lot of sturgeon were captured. But by the early eighteen hundreds, industry had developed and mill dams were being built for sawmills, gristmills, woolenmills, and ultimately paper mills. And there was a request in Augusta and actually at the federal level to build suitable fish passes, but these were ignored. And eighteen seventy-two, eighteen seventy-three report from the U.S. Commissioner of Fish and Fisheries, they noted that there was a significant reduction in offshore cod or nearshore cod and attributed to the reduction in migratory fish that were coming up and down the rivers and breeding. And this was a major food source for these fish. So this problem has been known for well over two hundred years, and this is a chance to make some changes here. These are the migratory fish that go up and down the river. The technical term is diademas. If you're anadromous fish, you're heading upstream to spawn. And if you're cat-anadromous, which is only the American eel, you're actually headed out to the ocean to spawn. Why is this important? Because these fish represent, as I said, tremendous food source both within the river, but as importantly, among our coastal waterways. The blue, the fish in blue, the sturgeon and the smell, they got as far as the falls. That's why we have smell camps down below. But the ones in green, the aylwives and blueback herring and shad and sea lamp rays and striped bass, they all went up as far as Lewiston and then also went up the Little Andrews Skoggan River as far as West Paris. And then Atlantic salmon went over the falls of Lewiston all the way up to Bethel and up the Little Andrews Skoggan all the way to Norway. And eels are really interesting. They're found everywhere. If you've got a wet, rainy night, eels will make it up around dams, over dams in wet places. So they're really an incredible animal. So they just kept on going. They didn't stop. So we have remnant populations of these fish now that are in the river that have held on. So there's an opportunity now to take advantage of those remnants and create better habitat for them and increase their populations. This is again a picture of the dam prior to nineteen twenty-seven. You can see, this is looking at it from the Topsom side. There is a fishway on the right, and there's actually an individual standing at the bottom of the fishway. And so at that time, they were trying to do something there. You can see how the dams go all the way across at that point. I don't know how effective that was. That building, that square building to the left is on Shad Island. We'll show another picture of that in a minute. That was the first power plant. It produced about as much electricity as one of our SUVs does today, so it was considered important at the time. When the gentleman built it, they said, "This isn't done last year because the floods are gonna take it out." And that's how I know it was pre-nineteen twenty-seven because that's when that building went down the river. This is a current view, which you all see every time you drive across the Green Bridge. And you can see the spillway on the right of the dam. Down at the other end on the left, towards the left side, you see a brick building that's parallel to the same level as the dam. That's the power plant. Then there's kind of a ramp facility. That's the upstream fish passage. And then Shad Island where that power plant was. This is a closer view, and you can see the fishway is for upstream passage. So fish need to go up. Those, at the bottom of the fishway, near the water, you'll see like three openings. Those are where the turbines that produce the power release water. Fish get up near the base of those with the outcome, outflow of turbines and try and find their way into the fishway. And then head up through, I think it's forty-two different pools with eight inch slots in between. And it can take, we know aylwives can take up to two days to pass through there, and salmon and other fish are also delayed. Dr. Lickter from Bowden College and actually Ed from Friends of Mary Meeting Bay do sonar on the river different times in the spring, and they've counted as many as ten thousand shad on the tide below the dam. But in last year, only ninety-one passed above the dam, and the year before, only fourteen. That red circle on the right where the water's coming out, that's the downstream fish passes. It's an eighteen inch pipe. So fish coming downstream, young of the year or adults that are returning to the ocean are do best when they can find that fishway and move downstream. They use what's called an attractive attraction flow to try and guide the fish that way. Doesn't always work out. Fish end up going over spillway. They could. To the right, there's water going over it. They go down through the turbines. It doesn't work out well for the fish at all, and we have seen evidence of that. I have, just living on Water Street, especially young aylwives. Seals love it, but there's thousands of those that have been killed at certain times. So if you've gone to the fishway viewing room, I take my kids there all the time and say, "This is amazing." And it really is amazing to see all these fish. These are river herring. River herring is a term for aylwives and blueback herring. It's very hard to tell the difference. They spawn in different areas, but they run together. And I found out once I, probably five years ago now, that, well, this is impressive. It's a very small percentage of what the potential is for these fish. So it's been shown by a lot of research and observation by academic researchers, as well as Department of Marine Resources, know a fisheries that the fishway just isn't efficient. And that stat I just gave you on Shad is one example. This chart shows you the actual counts of fish going up and over the fishway. With the potential line on the top being what was reported by the Department of Marine Resources, that the fishways were restored on the river and the fish could reset habitat for spawning, the available habitat. The potential number for river herring is three point seven million, and for a shad, it's a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, and Atlantic salmon, a hundred and six hundred. And the actual counts below, as you can see, are much smaller. They never exceed, even at the highest number, get higher than close to five percent. But the average, around ninety-one for river herring, is less than two percent. It's a similar figure for the other fish. This next slide shows what can happen if you make some changes, and this slide was put together by Dr. Lickter from Bowden. And if you look on the left, you see a blue line and a gray line that are kind of flat until two thousand five. And then the blue line continues flat. That's the Andrews Skoggan River here, the fish counts here for river herring. And the gray line is the Sebastic River. And when they removed the Edwards Dam on the Penobscot and then made improvements to fishways or did some small dam removals on the Sebastic River, the populations just jumped up tremendously. And the same thing with the orange line and Damerskoda Mills, they improved the fishway there, and then they started seeing. And where the orange line is there, that's a million fish. And you can see that the Andrews Skoggan River is flatlined. It's a much bigger river. There's more habitat ultimately available for many species. And what we've shown in other parts of the state is that when you allow the fish to return, they can rebound quite dramatically. Of course, it is a dam, and it's producing hydropower, so we wanted to make sure we got those facts on the table. It's owned by a Canadian company, Brookfield Renewable, which is a subsidiary of Brookfield Investment Advisory, which is also affiliated with Oak Tree Investments. They're the largest private landholder in the world. Last number I saw was seven hundred billion in assets. And they own facilities around the world, as I said. They control about eighty-five percent of the hydro production in Maine. So this dam produces about three percent of their ownership, or in Maine as a whole, about two point six percent of the hydropower production in Maine. For Brookfield, as quoted in the paper, Brookfield says that this dam produces about ninety thousand megawatt hours of power a year. And that converts to, could power up to thirteen thousand homes. So not as, you know, this power is not sold directly to make homes. It's sold on the open market and throughout New England, what's called I S O in New England, which is where the grid, probably heard that term. And so it's wheeled out. I took a look at the governor's energy office statistics, excuse me, for what we pay for supply. We pay about ten cents of what you pay for every kilowatt hour, about ten cents of that is the supply cost. So if we take the production and we multiply it by that, that the gross sales roughly at this dam would be about nine million a year. Brookfield doesn't disclose that number as far as I'm aware, but that's about what that thing would generate in terms of gross revenue. And so they're selling those for that power for profit on the river. And as I said earlier, it's a public resource, so there's other uses for the river, and the economics aren't just about hydropower either. I wanted to share this slide. This is quoted from Department of Marine Resources in two thousand twenty-two. And the picture shows aylwife harvesting, a river herring harvesting at Ben Thaws, which is the worst dam at the head of the Sebastic River. And between twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, harvesters caught three point three million pounds. It was one point four million pounds over twenty twenty-one, and they earned a million and a half dollars from those harvests. And as you recall the graphs earlier, the populations were increasing. They're going up from changes. And I'm sure that number's higher now, but these are the latest data for those aylwives harvesting. And this is kind of, in my view, the tip of the iceberg. These are people who are catching these aylwives directly at the fishways. They're licensed to do it. I think there's thirty-five communities in Maine that have that. We don't have that here because we don't have that run at this point. And they're selling that for bait. But the other part of the story is there's literally millions of fish that are either gathering at the mouths of these rivers in the spring, they head upstream, it's gone. And then they're coming back down in the fall, and young of the year are coming back down, and John Lickter will say possibly in millions. And they're providing food directly to nearshore fisheries like cod and on the bottom lobster and other fish. So there's a very important impact from the wild fishery that's out there that's feeding these fish via the biomass that's coming back down the river. So the economics aren't just limited to hydro by a long stretch or recreation. So the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission relicensing process is a heavy lift. And I, as I said, I'm a volunteer, and some days I wonder what I've gotten myself into with all this. There's public input as part of the process. The licensee, which is Brookfield, will make an application, and they have our preliminary application. And then federal and state agencies also have authority to seek changes and make sure that things are being done in the law. There's quite a bit involved. The process is gonna take about five plus years. It started in two thousand twenty-four. And Mark took the time to go over to a scoping session at the very beginning and kind of get a lay of the land, and I appreciate that. As well as so did folks from the community and the town of Brunswick and others. The, as I said, the licensee, Brookfield, has put in a preliminary application. And I just show this slide, not to read anything, but just to show you the different parts of the process. This starts five and a half years before the license expires. This case is expiring in two thousand twenty-nine. We're at about in that middle column right now where there's a preliminary study plans that are being approved. And then we'll move into over twenty-five and twenty-six actual studies in the river. What are the fluid dynamics? What are the fish actually doing? They'll be tagging fish. They'll be looking at how they respond at the current fishway, how they get up above and below, but not necessarily as much as some of the agencies would like. And that, there's been a big debate. We, you have the opportunity for income and input meetings, and we've attended those meetings and tried to understand what's going on and also put in our own input. One of the things we were able to do is get them to expand the study area for the fluid dynamics to overload the spillway because there may be an opportunity to put a fishway improvement over to the right, towards the Topsom side. Then the final two years before the application, before the license expires, they put in their file information. There's a whole bunch of other steps, chances for input, and probably legal action, not necessarily by us, but maybe, and then others as well in terms of trying to get the best fishway possible. Right now, the plan says they'll look at an alternative fishway analysis, various fishways that could occur, and then do a feasibility study, which is gonna tie into costs, which of course, you know, a private sector company is gonna look for, what can we do that's most cost beneficial to our, to the company? And our interest may be, that's fine. This looks like a great fishway, or we need to see more expansion. Another plan I was gonna make, but I'll come to you later. So this is, as I mentioned, a once-in-a-generation opportunity to make things better. These licenses run for thirty to fifty years. The last license was issued in nineteen seventy-nine. As I mentioned, the dam started working in eighty-three because it was rebuilt, was being rebuilt during that period. So it will reach fifty years in two thousand twenty-nine. And it's changed a lot since then. The whole river ecosystem is different than it was, and the water quality is much better. And we know the current fishway exists, but we know it hasn't worked well for forty-five years, and we also know that fish have been impaired for two hundred years. Finally, we know that the Clean Water Act has worked, so this is a, this is a chance to kind of build on that, to do more for the river and for the economies of our fishing communities and others with improved volumes of fish moving up and down the river as a resource. So four hundred years ago, English settlers arrived. Before that, Native Americans were using the river. Since then, we've industrialized. We've done a lot of different things, good and bad. And can we look in the mirror now and say, "What can we do to make things better in terms of fish passage here in Brunswick?" So I got involved with this, as I said, I'm a volunteer, but helped put together the coalition and worked with Mary Meeting Bay Trail Unlimited, Maine Rivers and American Rivers, and certainly Friends of Mary Meeting Bay and others to try and learn what's going on. And right now, we're in a phase where we're just trying to raise public awareness. As I said, this is a five-year process. But the extent we can raise public awareness now, we can be better prepared to understand what people want, but also how to respond when studies are completed and when there's an alternative fishway analysis. So we're not just trying, learning about this a year before the license might be issued when our opportunities for comment or influence in the process are over. A lot of times, these licensing procedures almost go under the radar in terms of public awareness. The agencies might know about them, but for example, some of the dams upstream are very close to being licensed right now. And most people don't even know that that's happened. Jeff Scott is an example. That's the next dam upstream. So this is a typical day in May or June, below the Green Bridge. This is a sturgeon. I'm not sure if it's an Atlantic or a short nose. Someone here probably knows. Dr. Lickter said this was about a five-foot fish, maybe longer. It might have been six feet. And if you spend any time in the river, you never would get a shot like this, but they were doing this shad sonar, and he put his high-quality camera on, like taking a video, and then took a good slide, and that fish cooperated. So that's kind of why we're doing this, and it's an example of how those populations are starting to come back and how we can do much more with other migratory fish. So this is my contact information, and I'm happy to, of course, answer questions now or do whatever, but feel free to get ahold of me. Also, I wanted to mention an additional resource. Bowden College has been very helpful. Dr. Vlad Hardnikov there has his students putting together a clearing council or a website that, there's a long, there's a long address there, but if you type in Brunswick Dam Fish Passes, you'll get to it right away. And that has information on what, how the process is working, what filings have been, any kind of news. For example, it has a resolution that was passed over in Brunswick, those kinds of things. So it's a great resource. And once you register there, anytime something new gets on it, they'll send the note and say, oh, this is just, you know, you'll get an email saying this was just put on. So that's a nice thing to have. And I'll stop there and try and answer questions, and I really, again, appreciate your time and thoughtful approach.
Questions?
I will say this, though. That was, I learned a lot tonight from that. Lived in Topsom my whole life, virtually my whole life, and it's good to know the history. It's nice to see the statistics and the data behind what the fish are doing or not doing. And it is, migratory fish are a huge part of our ecosystem, and to improve that would be something that would be almost detrimental to our community. It's like a must-have.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
How was that? What's the climate been for other, you know, committee rules, you know, last few years in Maine and close by?
The climate?
Relative to, you know, taking this step forward.
Right. There's been a, you may have read about some of the pressure on the Kennebec River and Atlantic salmon. I want to be clear. I'm an avid fisherman. And I want to be clear, I'm an avid fisherman and I think Atlantic salmon are iconic, beautiful fish. There's no question about it. But to me, this is a much bigger issue. It's about the overall ecosystem, the river and the millions of potential alewye and shad and others. The arguments that you've heard around the Kennebec have been a lot around Atlantic salmon, which makes sense in some ways because it's an endangered species and so there's more legal cloud around it. But to answer your question, Roland, the FERC is not known. FERC seems to have more of a, its mandate is to consider energy production, economics and social impacts and environmental impacts. It tends to lean more towards the energy production side. And the decisions recently have been criticized as not taking into account the environmental impacts for the impacts on migratory fish. Having said that, the examples that you saw on the Sebastopol River are fantastic. I mean, these populations jumped way up. It's where you, the hydro dam process with FERC collides with what the community might want in terms of fish passage. It's very tricky. This is also why we want to get ahead of it now. We want to be prepared, we want to be able to make arguments. What we're told is that FERC, the extent it does receive input from the public, it listens to that. And if it realizes the communities are very interested in improvements, its behavior is influenced by that. So it's for all to do.
Charlie, you talked about a special type of fish ladder that maybe on the Thompson side might work, that would look like a waterfall. Can you talk about that?
Yes, yes, I love, thanks for that question, Mark. There's a thing called a nature-like fishway, or it's also called rough bottom or something along those lines. And instead of that, the fishway that you saw, which was actually a Western design that was downsized for this dam and never has worked. The nature-like fishways are being used more often. And what would happen there is if you think about the Thompson side, there's those two big green gates there that they use at high water, they're called tainer gates. The dam there is about 20 feet high. And for these nature-like fishways, they like to have a slope of between 1 and 2%. So my calculation is if you got a 2% slope, you need about 1,000 feet. And if you started down around where the Green Bridge is and got, worked your way up around those ledges and made a curve and up through where the tainer gates are, you could create a nature-like passage, a river-like looking thing at the end of the dam there that allowed fish to move up through that. And it's very challenging to make everything work for every species perfectly. But those have been some of the most successful designs in terms of fish passage. The argument that you would probably get from Brookfield is that's releasing water that would be going through a turbine. So there's going to be that. But those are the kinds of things that we're hoping this alternative fishway analysis brings to light. And it was one of the reasons why we argued to have more of that spillway studied so that there would be data. We wouldn't get three years down the road and they say, oh, well, we didn't study that. No one asked us to, so we can't even conserve it. And that's what we're hoping to get past.
This is the second time I've seen your presentation as a marine researcher in the public.
Was it any better than it was?
I mean, I think you're really unsupportable in my position on this and that. I don't want to see that dam go nowhere, but I also am a huge advocate for increasing fish passage. So my support, I think, would be done behind one of the options that I believe Mark laid out for us, which was.
So what we did is Charlie pointed, and I talked to Julie Henzey, the Rosicomb manager. She provided us with the Brunswick proposed resolution. I edited very lightly just to say while still maintaining the dam's ability to generate power. So if you're interested in using the resolution that was in your packet tonight, it would support the increased fish passage and ask that it be designed to accomplish that. But it would also, again, just emphasize that we're not trying to get the dam taken out. We just want better fish passage.
Yeah. Renewable resources damaging and possibly going to be the other species. Anything and everything right now is needed to get fossils out of there. That's what I'm a fan of, even if it is 13,000 miles, but it's still 13,000 miles.
Oh, yeah.
I'm a supporter of what Mark has provided as written, written out with marine scientists. So definitely know what's going on with dams. Headworks is definitely not controversial at all.
No, that was a while ago. Just to be clear, usually the lowest cost and most effective solution for the fish is to remove the dam. But there are obviously ways to go about it. Fish lifts and other fish, natural fish like fishways. I will say that a dam like the Thompson Brunswick Dam is 50 years old, which in dam life in Maine is pretty short. And it's relatively new, young, I should say. At this point in the application process, the licensee, Brookfield, and also FERC have said that's not what they're considering is a dam renewal. So we're trying to be realistic around what's going to happen here and try and go for what realistically could happen in terms of fish. So I think where we want to really push hard and put our foot down, if you will, is let's get the best darn fishway we can there, figure out ways to get that funded and move forward. So that's how we're looking at it. So thank you for your comments.
You mentioned the funding. Where would the funding come for?
Yeah, that's a question. A really good question. National Oceanographic and Atmospheric Agency has provided grants over the last couple of years for fishway improvements and in some cases, dam renewal. I think it's anybody's guess these days what's going to happen in Washington around these agencies and funding sources. So I can't answer that, oh yeah, there's a great grant program that'll help. The company itself does have to shoulder some of these costs because they are taking advantage of a public resource to make a profit. So that would be part of the funding, maybe all the funding, I don't know. But that would be something that we'd have to understand. Once the alternative fishway analyses are done, then they're going to do the cost analysis and that's when we'll understand what the true cost, or the projected true cost would be. So I wish I could say, oh, I have it in my hip pocket, but I certainly don't.
I think the Nature Conservancy helped with the NOSCOT to a certain extent. Because there's a dam removal and fish passage improvement going on in the NOSCOT group right now. And the Nature Conservancy stepped in at one point. They didn't obviously fund the whole thing. I think that was also a Noah Grant, which that's gone. Nope, it's not going back. It's, I had 20 friends play off from last week. Great stuff. But yeah, it's, you can't, so it's got to be private sector or nonprofit at this point, I think.
Do you have any idea what it would cost to do, like you were saying, that thousand foot?
I'm not, I'm really not above, but I won't sugarcoat it. It's got to be in the tens of millions of dollars to do something like this. And that's not uncommon in this world.
Great. Thanks very much.
Thanks, sir. Thank you.
Oh, excuse me. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Ed Friedman, I chair Department of Marine Meeting Bay. And just want to say thanks to the board for listening. But also in the past, you guys have, or different generation of you, have supported our efforts to locate the classification on the river here. And that's really important. So thanks again. Generally, in the case of private dams, as this is, the costs are borne by the applicant. The examples of the NOSCOT or nonprofits bought some of those dams and so they're improving it. And so they've had to, you know, go out for grants. So while the feds sometimes may kick in, it's usually the burden on the applicant to come up with what is dictated by FERC, Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. And I just wanted to just, I'll mention a couple of stories. And that graph with the three rivers on it, that ship show with the gray line and the blue line and the whatever, that big rise in the gray line was when the Fort Halbach Dam came out, which was at the mouth of the Sebastopol River where it comes in, the Waterville, Windsor, up to the Kennebec. And there's, we didn't quite touch on three basic types of fishways. What's over here, a fish ladder, if you will, same thing at NOSCOT and Mills. Fish lift, I don't think it was mentioned, that's an elevator. And that works better for a lot of fish too. And that's what's up with Benton Falls right now, which is now the first dam on the Sebastopol. And so there's an attraction flow to get the fish over there. There's a prouder that kind of pulls them over to a big bucket that's in there. And then they, you know, four, four please, and they go up to a tunnel that takes them out at the edge of the dam. And a good buddy of mine who works for DMR, stuck there one day watching the fish come down and the bucket cycle, which you can cycle automatically for whatever timing you want. And watching all these river herring down there, you can see by the picture, the boat there, a lot of fish. And watching seals chase those herring all the way up 75 miles from top them, strike bass in there trying to get the herring. The herring are swimming into a little sheltered area in the rocks, like finally we're safe, right? And then a herring lands, stab them, very poor herring. So everyone likes to eat these river herring. It's really the red basket fish of all these systems. And there's that. And then also I've been flying eagle nest surveys for quite a few years. And with the resurgence of the fishery on the Sebastopol, I'm counting over 300 eagles in that section of river now. And it's, I just want to take you all up there. It's incredible to see a river come to life when it's restored like that. Appreciate your efforts on this and hope you'll, you know, submit a resolution. I think that local support is very meaningful to the extent possible in the FERC process anyway. We hope that they listen, but it's bound to help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, could I have this gentleman's name? The name of the gentleman?
My name is Ed Friedman, F R I E D M A N, Friends of Mary Meeting Bay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions or comments? Okay, turn it into motion.
I move that we pass the resolution as provided in the agenda packet. Thank you. To support increases fish passage at the Hydro Bowl Dam on Main Street, as written by Mark. Simple.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second?
I can say, I'll do it.
I'll do it.
Prove you seconded, all in favor of the motion. unanimous.
And passing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, 2516. Consideration, any appropriate action to approve the draft climate action plan to be moved forward to the town meeting warrant? Uh-oh, high-tech, it's a small stream. More high-tech, it's going to be a small stream.
Thank you. I'm not going to start over though. So what is, coincides with the beginning of this current warming period? The Industrial Revolution. What was happening then? We were dumping tens of millions of tons of CO2 into the atmosphere like we're still doing today. This is really not complicated stuff, nor is it a theory. This is fact. You don't hang out in your garage with a car running and the doors shut. You don't stick your mouth over a smokestack at a power plant and inhale deeply. If you have enclosed space like planet Earth where we have several different layers of atmosphere above us, holding the oxygen in so it doesn't just drift off into space, you don't want to fill it with literally poison gas. Climate change is very, very real and the current epoch is caused by us. This is not a question anymore. I work in the ocean, I'm a marine scientist, I own three different companies. One of them is a consulting business, I monitor water quality attempts. I worked for the state for 11 years in marine resource management. During that time, the epicenter for lobsters had moved from Stoneville to Machias. And that is because water temperatures are warming at a ridiculous rate. I'm going to move out all of sea and quote the paper, 99% faster. I don't know if I necessarily believe that, but it's warming very quickly and it's directly impacting not just our species, but clearly the economy. As soon as those lobsters get any farther north, we're going to be like Long Island sounds where they have one lobsterman left in the entire body of water, where there used to be hundreds. Again, we're seeing this in real time. The impacts that sea level rise is having not just on economic activity. Two storms last year wiped out 90% of the state's working waterfront infrastructure. That's not a fluke. Warming causes weather events to be far more extreme and less frequent. When I hear people talk about how environmentally damaging solar panels are, I usually need to grit my teeth and listen, but that's my job. It bears reminding folks, up until about 50 years ago, the entire state was deforested for almost a century. We have 10,000 acres of old growth forests left in Maine because we cut everything else now. That's 16 square miles. If we don't do something to slow emissions, then we don't, won't have anything. No trees, no birds, nothing, not in our lifetimes. Possibly not in my kids, but certainly in their kids. Cutting down a couple of acres of trees for a solar field is fine by me if it helps to get a coal-fired power plant offline. Is there an issue with recycling panels or mining the materials to build them? Absolutely, especially if you have to get them from geopolitical rivals. But those issues pale in comparison to what fossil fuels have and currently are doing to our environment, our health and our economy. And besides, when a new LNG plant is built or open, what do you think happens to the land it sits on? Is the LNG plant built Swiss family Robin style in the trees? Or no, the property's clear cut, paved over and it's a brown field for life. At least the solar farm has understory that can service habitat and doesn't leave two centuries worth of filth that needs remediation. I've heard people moan about renewable energy subsidies. The US spent $757 billion last year using taxpayer funds on fossil fuel renewable subsidies. That's people, not renewable, on fossil fuel subsidies. That's going to go up clearly with this administration by a lot. Without those subsidies, we'd be paying over $12 a gallon for gas, like the rest of the world does. The subsidy argument is not appropriate and doesn't even, it's not apples to apples here at all. Every single energy source this country has ever used has been subsidized. I'm going to sort of wind this down now by saying that if we'd not ended nuclear power investments, we would not be in this particular pickle. But getting a new plant permitted in New England is beyond possible at this point. If people are forming friend groups to stop affordable housing developments, there's no way New England's well-heeled, well-connected, nitty-gritty lobby will ever let a new plant get built. So we're stuck with wind, solar and hydroelectric. If any of you would like to come, and that's you folks as well, live with me this summer at any time and see what I do and see with my own eyes when I'm out in the field, which I am frequently all summer, you are more than welcome. I tow an 8,000-pound boat around the state of Maine with my Ford Super Duty 6.7-liter Powerstroke. It is an awesome truck. I love it. But the fact that I have that is because a lightning won't work for me. It won't be able to do that for a very long time. It won't be able to go down east. So the infrastructure is not there. So the infrastructure is not there. We all have. If people pulled their heads out of their social media echo chamber or some heinously unqualified talking head spew on cable news that is quite literally designed to piss you off so you keep coming back for more and then keep raking in the ratings profits and try to understand the issue a bit more, we'd all be in a much better place. This is not a liberal or conservative issue. Politicians very badly want and need it to be because it is one of the umpteen million things that is currently splitting this country in half, which helps get them elected, enrich themselves, and move on. Divide and conquer, ancient axiom. It's still profoundly relevant today. The plan in front of us today is nowhere near perfect. I don't agree with, I don't know, probably a quarter of the stuff in there. It's, but I think the most important thing here is to say it's not a mandate. I'll labor later on because I'm not going to sit up here and keep talking. But every single item in this plan that has any real teeth, it will cost money, will not only be voted on at town meeting if this makes the warrant, but it will then be brought in front of the board again for permission individually or the planning board for that matter. Nothing in this plan is a requirement, just like our COP plan, which I was on the committee floor. Hey! And there's a lot of stuff in there I don't agree with either. But it's a best practices document that hopes to guide some decisions being made in the future. That's it, pure and simple. We charged the LNG committee with coming up with a climate action plan, and that's what they did. And now it's our responsibility to advance that plan so the rest of the people in this town can debate it and talk about it. That is the end of my diet tribe, and my mouth is getting dry. So Nick, your turn.
She's been there. Thank you for marking up the crowd.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to try to.
I missed more stuff.
He's magic, man. No, I don't. Why did you spell it out there? I'm responsible. I've got it right there. They work at the middle, so they do it if you want to just. You start without it? Well, I guess so. Here, I'm just. Okay, so I'll just say what I was going to say without the slides. My name is Nick Watley. I live at three Watley Farm Road in Thompsons. Been there for forty five years. So I'm going to be, you know, pretty brief because, you know, there's probably going to be some questions or whatever. But the climate action plan charts a course to a safe and sustainable future for Thompson. Plan has been formulated based on extensive research, community engagement, and collaboration with stakeholders beyond our town. Specifies actions to make our community more resilient to climate impacts, to lower our town's carbon emissions, and to enhance the overall quality of life in Thompson. He's good. Okay, I'm on this slide right here. That's what I'm just going to. No, not on this one. Yeah, okay. Hold on, I'm done. And to, I'll do that sentence over. It specifies actions to make our community more resilient to climate impacts, to lower our town's carbon emissions, and to enhance the overall quality of life in Thompson, and to preserve a robust and thriving economy. The plan emphasizes the role that each of us can play by offering productive actions for every segment of our community, including residential, commercial, government, and nonprofit sectors. The list of actions has been compiled from publicly vetted resources, results from our workshops, the two thousand nineteen comprehensive plan, and our community resilience partnership application materials. That's the, you know, that we, where we got the grant to write the plan. It also carries forward actions from the two thousand twelve plan that are still relevant. The plan is not law, but it is a document describing current conditions and a compilation of possible actions that may help our town. However, no plan is successful until it's actually implemented. So we invite you to review it for those strategies and implementation steps. Our task is now to work together on these strategies, drawing on our collective ingenuity, vision, strength, and determination to ensure a resilient and bright future for our community. So we developed this plan with the help of many community members. Each step of the way, we've sought to involve as many residents as possible. Opportunities to engage with the process over the last year and a half. In sixteen public energy committee meetings, eight tabling events, three community workshops, two public surveys, articles in the Times Record, and more. We collaborated with municipal apartments in Mount Ararat and did outreach at our low-income housing complexes and mobile home parks. So the plan is based off the two thousand twelve plan. And since it was last written, there have been no changes as to which sectors contribute the most greenhouse gas emissions. First is transportation, followed by heating, and then electricity consumption. Actions identified in the two thousand twelve plan to reduce these emissions are still relevant. These include reducing vehicle miles traveled, switching to more efficient means of transportation, heating, and of late, cooling is kind of ramping up, purchasing energy-efficient appliances, weatherization, and investing in renewable energy. Part of the goals of reducing carbon emissions have not changed. The two thousand twelve plan cited an eighty percent reduction in emissions by two thousand fifty, and we're taking to it. So what's new in the plan? This plan includes a new focus on identifying our most vulnerable populations who may face greater challenges during these emergencies and/or generally adapting to climate change. These include the elderly, low-income, and unhoused populations. It aims to address the factors contributing to their vulnerability as well as which groups to consider involved and prioritize in climate-related plans and actions. The list of actions has several areas of focus based on the climate action plan developed at the state level. These include transportation, modernizing buildings, clean energy innovation, protecting natural resource industries and the environment, investing in climate-ready infrastructure, and building resilience in our community. Here are just a few examples from the plan. Embracing the future of transportation. To evaluate zero-emission cars for our municipal fleet during the procurement process. Support electric charging stations in public parking areas for hybrid plug-in or, and electric cars. Improve mobility and reduce vehicle miles traveled. Conduct a needs assessment for a local bus service. Support the Mary Meeting Rail Trail. Support walking and biking infrastructure. So kind of in conclusion, you know, we have modeled this after the very detailed Maine-Woatway Climate Action Plan. Put a lot of work put into that, and we think it's pretty good. You'll see at the very end of the, of the plan, a matrix of possible actions. And I just, you know, kind of as Matt said earlier, just remind you that we consider the plan to be an aspirational document, and it's an outline of options designed to mitigate the effects of climate change. And in our public outreach, we've also heard from some citizens that are pretty worried about taxes going up. And I just want to remind you that everything the Energy Committee has done to date has brought tax savings to the town. The PDA for the electricity, we don't use quite all of it. We're still saving some money over what we would have spent. The LED project, et cetera. So I think that you can be confident that that is our orientation, and we're not foolish enough to think that we're going to come and ask you guys for a million bucks to do something. You know, we, you know, feel really confident that renewable energy is, is a cost-effective thing. I've got a solar array at Morningstar. It's returning money every single month at my business. It's returning money to the business every month. And twenty five, thirty years, it is. Price of electricity is going up, so we don't know what it's going to turn out to be, but it's going to be well over a million dollars in terms of company over that period of time. So it's not jump change. And so our hope is that the Climate Action Plan will pass and that we will have a chance to work on projects and assist the town in finding ways to save money and also protect the environment. So that's what I got for you.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Any questions?
What was the total number of residents that you surveyed?
We got a hold of everybody we could, but it was only two hundred and fifty six. So you could say that's a lot or a little, but, you know, we publicized it quite a bit. And I feel like that was a portion of what we did. I can tell you that the greatest number of people that we talked to was at the solid waste facility. And those are, you know, great conversations. We had some, some people that thought it was a really dumb idea, and we had a ton of people that really wanted to engage and, you know, find out what we were doing, and they shared concerns. And, you know, we rallied those concerns and tried to pull that into the community.
Tell me a little bit more about your desire for public transportation. Will that be something that you can get enroll areas like off Caddiance Road? Or you, or do you have to drive a vehicle to get to the tops of your mall in order to take the bus? What is the plan?
There is no plan. The plan is to study.
Study.
That. So, you know, we would propose that, given that transportation is such a high percentage of the greenhouse gas emissions in Thompson, that we study that as a possibility. Nothing is going to be a silver bullet that's going to solve it for everybody. But, you know, if a portion of people can use public transportation and if public transportation could pay for itself, why not? You know, so it's, you know, it's like, you know, it's like you don't, you don't win a battle with, you know, one arrow from your quarter. You've got to have a bunch of different, you know, a bunch of different applications.
Like rail, right? Well, it's like rail.
Yes.
Having a rail line, passenger rail straight through Thompson.
Yes, right, right. I, I, I am going to well imagine a bus transportation would be a bit cheaper than rail. I forget. You taught me Victor, how much?
No, he has these numbers of garbage.
Yes, anyway. So, you know, the proposal would be to just study the effectiveness of that. And if it turned out to be a cost-effective solution that could work for a number of people, then I would say that would be good, just like everything else we're doing. You know, we're just not spending a bunch of money, but, you know, we're saving some money.
So I see that you're wanting to put in electric charging stations in public parking areas and so forth. There are ten within fifteen kilometers of here. Has anybody done research about how much those are actually used?
It's not part of our charge. We're, we're hoping to add things like that, you know, if we can get another charge after we climb the action plan. You know, we're hoping to add specific projects, you know, when you guys go through for us to study these specific projects.
Right, but it was just one of your embrace the future of transportation you have in your plan. So I was wondering what initiated that. I was assuming that there aren't enough, or there must be some reason why you want to start installing them everywhere in your plan.
Yeah, not everywhere, but. Was that?
We asked the library to tell us how much usage they're getting out of the one you had, you got put in there, and they haven't responded to our requests, so we don't know.
Yeah. I, actually Victor's got a good answer for this, but, you know, it basically is that people are mostly going to charge at home and they're going to charge at work. So, you know, given that there's an increasing number of electric cars or plug-in hybrids, you know, we have a, we, we use an electric car over at Morningstar Stone and Tile to do templating in. And there's other people, including myself, that would love to plug into that thing, you know, whenever, you know, whatever we can. So it's a benefit that we offer our employees. It's a pretty low-cost benefit for us. And with the cost of the Nissan Leaf compared to the cars that we were driving, and sometimes trucks that we were driving to go, you know, take a digital template or to a job and template branded countertop, we are saving a lot of money in that way. So, so anyway, you want to.
I, you've already started. All I was going to say was that the, the concept of buying electric charging is totally different than what we do now. We don't go, we go to a gas station and fill up. It's not going to be that way with electric cars. You're going to charge where the car sits. So if it's sitting in a parking lot for eight hours or seven hours a day, that's where you're going to charge. And so you need a charger at every, essentially, we're going to eventually need a charger at every parking lot. Now, it's not going to happen immediately. Only eight point seven percent of the cars sold last year were EVs, but it's been increasing like this. And so eventually, if you want good employees to come to your business, you're going to need electric chargers because they're not going to, that's going to be an issue. And also, if you have an apartment building and you don't provide electric chargers, the tenants aren't going to be able to install those chargers. They're going to go somewhere else. So it's an incentive to keep good people in town, make some out for, for businesses and for. And it's not that the, it's not that the town has to do the work. There, there are companies that will do this for us, so.
I just wanted to add that actually the town of Thompson is part of the Bigfoot Council of Governments research project into charging stations. So there's already an entity working on doing research around the needs in the future needs of electric vehicles. And also come July, there's going to be a efficiency main grant program that is looking specifically to have level three charging in either Brunswick or Thompson. So being ready for that money, being knowledgeable, and having the research is on the table already. Thank you, Mrs. Eaton.
Should I sit down or what?
Your resignation?
Down to my book. Bill Eaton, fifty, Granite Hill Drive. I'm not here to argue for or against the climate change. I'm here to remind people that this is a town meeting form of government. And it's that way because we've heard over and over again, it's the most democratic form of government.
Yeah.
And to next point, whether this passes or fails, doesn't happen unless it's out there in front of the rest of the people within the community.
That's great.
So I don't think that the argument tonight should be whether this is a good plan or a bad plan. I think the argument tonight should be, do we want it out for everybody to vote on? Not just to make a decision here that, no, nobody else is going to have a say in this. So those are my two cents, and I'm sorry that I've been a bugger.
Thanks again.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'm Nancy Chandler. I live at eleven Western Path in Thompson, and I've been in town for six years. This is an opportunity for the town to reduce the impact of the inevitable climate change that is happening. We're going to have bigger rain balls, stronger winds, more tree limbs down, and more electric outlets, and more flooding of roads. If the town prepares plans for this, as they're already been doing with some of the new culverts, larger culverts they're putting in, instead of washing out the road like happened in Freeport two winters ago, the larger culverts absorb that greater rainfall and protect this infrastructure we've got. and protect this infrastructure we've got. So this plan, as far as, I've gotta respond a little bit to the comments about public transportation. There was a lot of interest in the surveys we've done, and with seventy people who came to the meetings here and shows these different options. A lot of interest in trails for walking and biking, a lot of interest in public transportation, a lot of interest in, um, in renewable energy sources. And these are part of a, of a, of an approach to thinking of fossil fuel as a great resource, a limited resource that we should use, only what we have to. I, we drive two electric cars in our house. My husband's been driving them for twenty years. They are, they don't waste any energy. They use up all the energy for movement. Gas cars leave much of their rubber on the road as they're going. They're, they're, the move, the energy that it generates goes into forward motion. And there's, there's nothing that wears out, so their maintenance is very inexpensive. So the, the fact that they're now nine percent of the, of the resources it, uh, that are being sold in their cars is probably gonna go up with the tax in, because they're cheaper, it's simpler. Americans ask for simple cars, we could get even cheaper with the trucks. As far as public transportation, we have a bus route that comes through Thompson right now. It stops at Hattler's at eight in the morning, at noon, and at five o'clock, going from Auburn to Bath, taking workers and going back. And anybody can ride it for two dollars and it's can grow. We could expand on that. It's started by Western Main Transportation. We could be, depending on what the need and the interest is. Uh, they're gonna be, we now have nineteen percent of our population are elders. From Blackberry, we're up to twenty-five percent. But even just the aging of the population we've got right now, they say nothing about other elderly people, retired people coming into town, which is pretty ugly. So these people, as they get up, and my husband's closer to eighty, when they stop dri- driving, they should stop driving, but they're not going to if they don't have an alternative. So I see a, this town has done a transportation study about ten years ago. One of the planners did a transportation study. It's time to renew that at a deeper level. Find out what's available. I've talked often with the community member of Western Main Transportation. He sees buses, it's much more flexible than trains and more affordable, and they can move smaller to this when the need is low and increase as time goes on. He's even purchased a recent bus. So they, they are already in the business of providing transportation through our town. We could have, so we could have in-town transportation to get people from our three low-income housing locations, that one, at least one large trailer park, and two, Westbrook House and River Landing, low-income houses where not everybody has cars. And they don't, can't necessarily afford to have cars in the future if gas prices keep going up. There could be a real demand for public transportation. If we, we should be looking at more thoroughly than what I've thought about as a town again. And consider this as a way to lower our carbon emissions, lower our cars, lower our air emissions that we have to breathe. So we, we have the potential to, to change the way we get around because we care about our earth, we care about one another, we care about the land. And we want it to continue. We're lucky to have so many trees, forests, in Thompson that absorb carbon dioxide and help mitigate the effect of all our transportation and heating. But we need to, to protect those and protect our resources, a better planning for what we know is coming. Thank you for your, your time and attention to this. I hope we'll put this out to the general public at our town meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Absolutely.
Um, I just wanna say for the record that I'm actually going to vote to bring this to the town meeting because I think that the town should make that decision. But I just wanted to make some comments and ask some questions because there are private bus systems for like the Highlands and people get around. And, you know, when you make a comment that the people who shouldn't be driving, shouldn't be driving, it's possible that they're not because they have private situations, you know, that are busing them around. And anything that you're going to want to do in the future, you still have to come back to us for funding, and so it's not like, I don't wanna not do that. But I, I, I really feel like I have to say something because I've had complaints about the Energy Committee. And one of them was my own in witnessing, um, one of your recordings because Mark Waltz gave some information that he wanted to share with the group about what he thought the select board was gonna support. And someone in the meeting said, I'm not gonna say any names, but somebody in the meeting said, well, he's just a resident, like it didn't matter. He's the assist, he's the town manager of this town, and I found that to be offensive. Another one was I got a letter where it said, somebody called my father and they called him a climate denier and told him this cow flatulence was ruining our planet. This was insulting and inappropriate coming from a representative of the town, but mostly a missed opportunity to learn more about what the needs might be, or in our case, might not be. I hope in the future that town representative is venturing out and public input, acting in a more appropriate way, or perhaps are invited, uh, to a meeting with the town staff present. I just see some attitude with this Energy Committee when I watch the videos. And I wanna call you on that because you're not an entity by yourself. You're an ad hoc committee that reports to the select board, and I just think that I need to say something because we don't have meetings to talk about what we see. I just think it's an attitude of respect. We, I, I honor what you have done. You've done great things. Um, getting the LED lights in here, you've done great things with, um, uh, like you said before, the surveys, the interactive table events, I came to them, um, the community workshops, the outreaches. Excellent job. We've worked really hard. But please, please, have an attitude of respect for every resident, whether they're the town manager or anyone else. And that would be my, my request. But I am going to vote for this, uh, myself, that you will go to the town because I think that's the right decision. I have no question.
No questions?
Um, I'll, I'll go. Um, first, well, put, early on today, thank you, Matt, for putting that on. Um, there's no way we can disagree with any of that. Uh, I, I do, I have been to many of the Energy Committee meetings. Um, I've watched every one of the meetings online, the ones that I haven't gone to. There's no question in my mind that the Energy Committee has done fantastic work and they have worked really, really hard. I, through that process, have learned and observed and kind of sat as a fly on the wall to just see what goes on and to see the byproduct of what comes out. I had a few questions about it as well. Um, I don't know if it's a question, I don't know what the question's directed, but first thing, by passing, because I'm on the same page, by the way, I'm just throwing that out there. I'm gonna vote for it as well. I think the town needs to make a decision. It's not, it's too big of a decision for us to make as a board, whether we agree with it or disagree with it. So I, I do feel that the public needs to have more of an input on this topic. Uh, the questions that I have are more around, uh, in watching and participating in the committees. I've heard a lot of how much this is going to save the town, um, and all of the work that we've done in the past, and how it saves all the money. Uh, some of the action steps, although what I'm reading tonight isn't what I was looking at last week. Um, it looks like there's some things that have been removed. Although there are a lot of things in here that look like they may have some potential costs and, and some things that, um, are hard for me to think about. And it's not a personal thing, it's just as a, a select board member who's trying to represent a grand, uh, a very eclectic group of individuals in this town. Um, it would, it, it's pertinent that we ask tough questions and that we go through some of these things. One of the things that I, I noticed and have had conversations with constituents in this town about is the mandates of trying to set new codes for, uh, developers that are coming into town or new homes being built, having mandates that they also install EV chargers with that new construction. Um, the feeling that I get and that I hear is that people have a right to live the way that they want to live. Um, and if they don't wanna put a EV charger in their new home that they're spending seven hundred thousand dollars on already.
Way more than that.
Then, then they shouldn't have to. And I think to put man, certain mandates on certain things in this process is just something that I, I don't think I could support. Um, and I, and I think whenever we try to put something in a code for developers to mandate chargers or solar panels or things that go in, I don't think it's within the purview of the developer. I think that's more of a private equity that comes in and does those things. By, by placing the onus on the developer to put those in, it just gets costs that's passed down to the tenants and makes it even more unaffordable to live here. As we start looking at apartment complexes that are coming in, I don't think we need to put the codes in there because I think they're choosing to do it on their own. They're using it through the private equity firms that they know that are putting them in and they're making a residual on that. Um, it, I think much smarter for them to be able to have that freedom than to be mandated to do it and pass that cost down. I still think it will be done because, you guys are right, people drive EVs and people that are living in apartments or other places, the likelihood of somebody driving an EV is high. If they live there, they need a place to charge their cars. So I think it does, but who are the developers to put stuff in? But if we were to pass a two-hundred unit apartment complex and we talk about eight percent of the EVs on, um, that are driving, that's sixteen people that would live in that apartment complex that might have an EV, and they'd be sixteen chargers, um, in order for people to live in that. I, so I do think that developers are in that, but to force them, I, I'm just throwing that out there that I don't know, that's something that will get long-term traction, although it's good to put in there, um, as part of this action plan.
Can I address that?
Sure, can.
Um, we've tried throughout the, the plan to use, um, for good reason, uh, words like encourage.
Right.
There's nothing in that, you know, that says that the developer will have to do this. Um, we're proposing that we adopt ordinances to encourage that sort of behavior. Um, you've got a lot more details on that kind of stuff.
If we were to encourage it, in your guys' mind, what are the ways that we would encourage it?
Um, well, the things that, that's gonna have to go through, you know, through the whole process, what we do, uh, we might offer an incentive, uh, you know, I don't know, we wanna talk through it.
Yeah, it's, it's, again, we're, we're going through this re-code process, so there's, there's a lot changing in the code. But, you know, we have minimum parking space. We could say, well, if you put in an EV charger, you can, you don't have to have as many parking spaces. Um, and, you know, with that, um, in, in a place like the mall, having, you know, because a store moves in with so many square feet, saying you need to have X number of additional parking spaces is kind of crazy because there's plenty of space there already. And so that, there, since, so a lot of the stores that came in there have had a real struggle trying to get, you know, where am I gonna put the parking? You know, where am I gonna put these parking spaces? They're mandated by our code. So if we, we change the code and say, you don't need as many parking spaces, you know, you can put in a few EV chargers and we'll, we'll give you, you know, we'll, we'll make it easier for you. So there, there are ways in which we can do it. I, that's a pretty bad example because it's already been changed. But, but that's the kind of thing that happens. Um, we, you know, we could use, on, our, our comprehensive plan suggests, uh, using more on-street parking. Um, and that's a great idea for traffic calming. Um, it also means that there's, uh, public spaces that are usable for not just the people who are living in there, but for people visiting as well. And so you could say, you don't have to have, you know, X number of, of parking spaces behind your building. You can, you know, you can cut that by five percent or ten percent if you put in a couple chargers. Um, those are the kind of incentives we could use. Um, the other thing too is that, um, when you're building a new facility, putting an EV charger is very inexpensive. If you have to put it in later, it's gonna cost you a lot more money. Um, so it may be, developers are tend to be, you know, they're, they're coming in, they're putting in a building, and they're gonna do it as cheaply as they possibly can because that's when they make the most money. But it doesn't do us any good because, you know, if we have to go back in and add infrastructure that shouldn't have been there to begin with, it's gonna cost us more money. And so, yes, it, it might cost the developer a little extra, but it saves us tax dollars in the long run. And we need to do that. You know, there's a lot of things, uh, in the plan where we're asking for that kind of thing. Excuse me, I have a cold still. But, you know, anyway, I, I think you get the idea.
I'm relatively a new resident in, I've been here since twenty eighteen. I have just a simple question. I'd like to know where you go, if I can kinda do that?
What comes with questions about?
No? I keep hearing about plans, but I never see the, I never see where the plans are accomplished or what of the plan, what part of the plan has actually been done. I'm on the finance committee and I'm trying to get a sense of where you would go to look to see. You have a plan that was introduced in twenty twelve, and I don't see where you can find what part of the plan has actually been accomplished. And not just this one, but any one. So I just would like to know where you could go to find what, if a plan has been in, introduced in twenty twelve, when, where would you find the results?
You, uh, say your name and your address.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm Donald Stein and I'm a five-inch trucker.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I'm Jeanette McNeil. I live at two books I drive here in Thompson. I apologize for coming in late. I just got back from Boston and driving was terrible out there. I almost missed the Thompson exit because of the foggy. Anyway, a brief comment, I just wanted to encourage you, please put this on the warrant so that people, Thompson, can vote on it. It would be very helpful. You may not all agree, but that's the purpose of town meeting, is to discuss things, think about them, and then take a vote. So that's my only message. Thank you.
Anything else?
I have one more.
Okay.
And I think that was, we were all on that same page. Anyway, um, the last, the last thing that I wanted to ask or, or bring up is the idea of the, the timeframe that an action plan like this will place on our current staff, and I think that's wildly underestimated. Um, in looking at the plan and just looking at, you know, the, the individuals that would be in charge of this, it puts a lot of time on an already skeleton crew for staff, and I want, I'm not sure we can implement this plan with the staff we have because we just don't have enough and there's only so many hours in the day. And it places a lot of time outside when there's a lot of things going on that need to be also taken care of. So I do, one of, one of the things about this that I would also like to see is part of that cost savings that we keep talking about that we're gonna realize. One of the things that we don't see is what the initial costs would be and what the realized savings would be over what period of time. Um, because something like, uh, changing these lights to all LEDs in this building, um, what would that cost the town to do that? Is there a grant for that or is there incentives to do that? Um, because part of what I think would help the broad, uh, population of Thompson to understand is a lot of people think with their wallets nowadays, and it's really tough when there's a lot of tax hikes, tax increases, and people live in a fear-based world sometimes, and their fear that this is just gonna make their taxes go up. And without any evidence disproving that, I think it's very hard to get past it. And I think to get broad support on a lot of these topics, it would be nice to see what would that project cost us uh, initially? What would that increase our taxes to be initially? And then how much would we save over time and would that actually bring our taxes down over the next period? And, you know, something like, uh, doing green energy audits of this building and trying to replace things before necessarily they needed to, just because we wanna make it green. What's the actual cost of those things and is that feasible? And I think that's something that our, our population should know before they make a good vote on some of the things that we're trying to do. In reading through here, I, I agree. I'm looking at it. A lot of the stuff is, you know, evaluate or identify or encourage, ensure, um, but there are still a few things that I do think will create some kind of cost in what I would call unintended consequences because I do believe, like we all do, the intent of this is so solid and it's so heartfelt because what you guys are doing, it's, you know, it, it's hard work to, to put something together and also face the criticisms of somebody that may not think the same way or feel the same way about it. Um, but what I would like to see is just a broad support overall for it and trying to find ways that we can get that broad support through those further transparency and, and baby steps of, of getting this in.
I, I guess what I would say to that is that we've always, uh, approached, uh, projects and, uh, you know, projections of what we might do, um, with the knowledge that tax increases are not. tax increases are not, that's not our game. Um, you know, that, and, you know, I can think you can see in what we've done uh that, you know, savings resulted. Um, nothing on here, thi- this is a listing of all the possible things you can do.
Right.
Nothing on here says that you have to drive an electric car. Nothing on here says that you have to do an energy audit, you know? These are things, you know, we've we've done the research to, you know, to give the broad picture of things that we could do that might benefit the town. Um, and we're gonna have to come to you and want to come to you. I mean, you know, our charge is up. You know, we have one meeting in June, just to kind of recap the process, our charge is up. So, you know, we we understand that process. Um, so we're gonna take part of that meeting and say, okay. Well, God willing, the thing passes, so it so it passes. Um, now, what of these projects do we think is a likely place to start? So we're gonna start with something that has a likeliness of success. Um, and then we're gonna come to you and we're gonna say, okay, well, here's here's a couple things. We'd like to study these things. Um, typically, we found grants to do things. I'm not sure, I can't tell you that I'm gonna be able to find a grant for everything. Um, but what would you say if I, you know, if I said, okay, I've talked to some energy auditors and that's gonna cost ten thousand dollars to have somebody evaluate the town's businesses, but our town's town's buildings? Um, what would you say if it looked like we could save twenty thousand dollars? You know, if you can do that and we can demonstrate that that's possible, then you can make the decision on whether, you know, you want to commit some money to possibly save money on a sustained basis or if you're after your money here. Um, I don't know how many stranded credits we have from PPA, you know, from the electric PVA. But I'd love to know what that number is because we could use that, those to-do projects. You know, we can use some of that money that's being spent to actually save natural gas or who knows what, you know? We don't know what yet because we don't know what their numbers are. So that's kind of what we do is examine those sorts of things and then hopefully bring that to you guys so that, you know, you can decide whether you want to move forward or something or not. And I think as much as this plan can can uh as as much as we can get people to understand that this is a listing of all the possible things that you could do, there's nothing in here that forces anybody to actually do anything. It's all a negotiation and, you know, if you can spread the word, if everybody can spread the word that that's not what this thing is all about, um, then I think we would have a chance to do some great stuff. So.
I have a question for Mark and this might be. Um, if this goes to town meeting and it was voted through as accepted and it's a yes. And and I'm saying this because I think it's an action plan. It's like what the gentleman said earlier, we want to see action on all these plans. We want to see these things checked off the list and that's what people are voting to do. Would that mean that we would have to go through and do all of these things because the voters voted yes?
Probably the best example, that's the comprehensive plan.
Right.
Um, and our CPIC committee has a matrix of, I think it's like sixty items, multiple pages. It's got, each department has like maybe ten things that were listed in the plan. They have representatives that meet with the departments to see where you're at this and CPIC actually can show you where they think we're at. If we pass something, then presumably it's for a reason.
Right.
Um, so it certainly with the comprehensive plan, it's been intended that, yeah, this is expected to be worked on. Um, do we get everything done at once? No, but we're certainly trying to accomplish the items in the plan. So this would be considered a directive to try to accomplish as much as possible. Um, you know, there's an item in there that says turn these two buildings into model examples of how to heat the building um of green energy or whatever. Right now, we don't need new HVAC systems for these buildings. So if we're trying to turn them into a model example, now we could be uh required, the only way to do it is to report, replace stuff before it needs to be replaced. Um, so, so we should be careful when we pass a town meeting because people come back to us and say, hey, this is what town meeting said, this is what we want you to do. So I I don't think we want to pass something that has stuff in it that we don't intend to do. If we don't intend to do it, let's take it out.
I I'm just looking at that right now. Upgrade to energy efficient interior lighting in municipal buildings. Upgrade to energy efficient appliances in municipal buildings. Um, upgrade streetlights and exterior lighting for municipality-owned facilities with energy efficient LED lighting. So all of those upgrades, if it was voted in, would we just have to do it?
No.
Most of it's already been done.
Well, some of those things, yeah.
But the problem we've got is we we have to buy a fixed amount of, we've already bought a fixed amount of power. So we could replace these lights and save more energy, we aren't gonna save any money because we already have to buy electricity.
There's an enormous amount of stuff in the comprehensive plan that the town isn't simply gonna tackle. Plus, on top of that fact, this board changing nearly, well, it's gonna change in November and it will probably change again. So whatever we pass or whatever the town passes now, couldn't we look at it a completely different view next year or the year after that? Um, there's no legal teeth in this at all, just like when the legislature defanged the growth management act, which is why comprehensive plans are basically just a, this would be, this sure would be pretty cool, we could do this. But there's no legal ramifications if you don't follow it at all. I get what you're saying, Mark, it's like, why would we waste all this energy on voting on this? But if there's a sizable portion of the population that wants it to happen, then they're the ones who control the town, not us.
So we should expect that if it passes, we're gonna try to accomplish it, is my only point.
Some of it, yes, some of the stuff that's.
I think all of it.
Some of it, some of the stuff that's feasible, Mark. As I said, with the comprehensive.
Why put something in that's not feasible?
Why did we pass a comprehensive plan? Are you, are you, you want to whisper off or just file me?
Excuse me, I think we have another agenda, so we need to move this. All right, do I have a motion?
Oh, we have one more public comment.
We have another.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Matt, hi, I'm on our phone from seventy-five Old Lisbon Road. I wasn't sure how the public comment went, so I was just waiting. Um, I just wanted to say I attended um one of the climate change, uh, climate action plan workshops. I thought it was really beneficial, I thought it sounded really credible. And I just wanted to express my support for the climate action plan. Thank you.
I'm sorry to cut you off, didn't mean to ignore you.
We have another comment, please, and then I have a comment.
Hi, real quick, Tom Gilbert, I live on Prospect Street here in Tomsom. And um just wanted to say that I'm in here in support of the climate action plan. Uh, I've been to all three of the events they had and they filled a room with people here, all supportive of the plan and um all real active participants in the plan. So just want to echo echo the the idea of this being a a town process and that this should have town input and that the town folks should be the ones ultimately to decide on how this happens. Thank you.
Sure.
Jackie Bressi, uh, Southern Franklin Lane here in Tomsom. Uh, I'm a member of the energy committee that has worked on this. I just want to point out to you that there's no timeline in this plan. There's nothing that says this is gonna happen right now. We can take steps as if this plan is passed by the town. We can choose strategically those things that make sense to do this year. Think about and look at the budget, look at what what is possible. But it gives us, it gives us a goal, it gives us a way to move forward. And that's really all it is. Thank you.
Can we um set this up in in the writing of it and saying that we as a committee, as a select board, want to approve this to go to the town with the understanding that, I don't know, whatever, thirty or forty, I don't mind items in the document, I don't count them, but that, you know, we'll look for the top twenty percent to implement, you know, to see, can we actually work it that way?
Or like the assumption that it's gonna be an incremental process. And that's really what it is. So you you can't, I wouldn't put a timeline on anything, I would just assume.
No, not time, percentage, saying, you know, let's.
Well, I think that's even.
Initially, we want to try and find the top twenty percent that aren't gonna cost us a lot of money, that we can be moving forward. Um, is there a way to do it so that the town understands what they vote for? We're not voting for every line item, but that this was the pie in the sky um list of all the things that could happen. And we're gonna focus on the top twenty or the top fifteen or the top ten initially to see, you know, how it would work.
So make it part of the warrant, basically.
I'm sorry.
Make it part of the warrant article.
Make it part of the warrant, the wording of the warrant so that it's not all or nothing. It's, we're gonna say, this this was the energy committee's overall urging, wanting, this is their wish list. And we're gonna trickle that down. If you vote for this, we're gonna trickle that down to start initially with a certain percentage on what's doable and what's not doable. This is, this is the pie in the sky wish list, but how do we work that?
It's guidance, I mean, I'm not, you can't commit to twenty percent because, I mean, there's lots of things could happen.
Right, right.
Economic disaster, whatever.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I I think if if sometimes there's a, you know, on on an article like this, there can be, you know, a a blur beforehand, you know? The energy committee could write a blur trying to explain, you know, you know, what our orientation is. And, you know, we're gonna go for the most effective cost, you know, most cost-effective and biggest bang project first. You know, so, you know, things can be tackled in the order that they uh that they're possible. Um, we can't get it all done at once. Um, and you're not, I don't think that the people, the the people of the town are voting, you know, on this thing, which is a laundry list of all the possible things. Um, and if, I think if they understand that, there's really nothing to be afraid of because we can't do any more than what we do.
On the warrant.
Maybe one given bad.
On the warrant, it's gonna say the select board uh says it should ought to pass it or ought not to pass it. But we could say ought to pass with this understanding or something like that. I don't know.
Well, we have a meeting for that coming up shortly, so.
You what?
We have a meeting to discuss the warrant coming up, so stay tuned, right? So.
Uh, I guess my my thought on an action plan in general, when there are action items, the idea behind them is that we take action on set items and we don't leave items off. So that was, this is a procedural question, it's not a point that I'm trying to make. It's more that if we do have things on here and the town people vote for them, we should do them or we should take them off because whether we accomplish them or not, that's if we're listening to the people that vote for it, they're voting for the whole thing. They're not voting for one or two or three things that they like. It's an all or nothing type of process so that if this does go to town meeting, people vote through it and they say yes, then all of these things should be on there. The caution that I reserve myself to is that what are the unintended consequences of that? Because we may dive into some of these things as we evaluate and find that we're not fiscally able to do it or it just doesn't make sense right now. And how do we tell the people that voted for us to do it that we're not gonna do it because it's gonna, for whatever reason, and then they say, well, we want it, and then we do it and it raises their taxes. Then they bitch and go back and say, we don't want it anymore, you know? It's, so it's, that's why I'm thinking as far as transparency goes, that's what people do. They vote for this as an entire thing, not an item by item. So I just want to throw my feeling out on that, my reservation on it.
Thank you for waiting.
Bravo. Uh, my name is Tim Giddon. Um, I live over at uh, Prospect Street in, uh, it's a table for whatever, man, that's up to you. Um, I just want to thank the board for creating the opportunity we can have this discussion for the first place and creating the charge, meaning the committee to help with this. And I also support the comments from several members that put it out to uh town meeting. One thing, I guess two things, just listening to the conversation of the chair's comment that this really is an incremental process, they're gonna take time, door to salute. They'll start with the ones that kind of seem to make the most sense earliest. Um, uh, you know, manager's gonna be a great judge of what makes sense to tackle early one. People will understand that it takes time to do that, so I don't think it'll be an all or nothing. They won't expect it all to happen in the first year or the first five years. Um, I guess the other thing, just thinking about, and I'm not gonna try to wordsmith anything here. Um, but I know that at town meeting, many town meetings I've been to, people listen to what the board says about something, so even if it isn't like in the warrant, somebody were to comment from the board that we're gonna take this on a common sense approach, take the one, the low hanging fruit first, you know, I mean, just sort of reasonable, common sense statements about how tackle a complicated topic like this, I think that will listen to that, I know it'll make sense.
Thank you. So I'll say a couple words, so. So I think Marie and I were the only ones around when this committee was, when this group was formed and uh I hope everyone thinks that I've been highly supportive of you in the years since then, so. And I am gonna vote for this for sure, so I, I don't, you know, we were frowning or something, someone thought it was, you know, gonna be like this, you know, guy who's gonna like sink the ship, but I'm not. But, uh, you know, it just, you know, I used, you know, I've been working like forty-five years and the key is being patient, just sort of knowing how to read the audience at the same time. So, uh, you know, I I know you'll do that. Um, but things change, so, you know, just don't get too excited about one thing when something better could come down the road. So it's like be, be willing to be flexible and, and like you said, make sure you're listening to everyone. So with that, I'd like a motion.
I was also a member of the community.
Really?
Yeah.
You look so young.
Yeah. Thank you.
Time flies, doesn't it?
It does. I move that we pass um the climate action plan as presented for placement on the warrant uh for town meeting and then.
We have to have a public hearing first, you know?
You don't have to.
Okay.
Um, your first meeting in April, you'll have the warrant when you can go through and it's said, take your positions on items and things. Then your second meeting in April is your public hearing on the whole warrant. So if you want, that can be the public hearing on this item.
So we're, we have a motion?
You need to vote tonight on whether you want to put on the warrant, but you don't have to have a public hearing necessarily before you do it.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
Do you need a second?
We need a second, thank you. All right, motion and second, all in favor of the motion? unanimous, thank you. All right. Twenty-five seventeen, consideration any appropriate action on posting weight restrictions on roads March seventeen, two thousand twenty-five to April twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-five, or sooner if conditions allow. How can you talk that last discussion? How can you talk that last discussion?
I, I'm gonna try. We're here tonight, or I I came before the board tonight. It's our, it's an annual process we go through to protect the integrity of our roads to the tax area. Um, ninety-nine percent of the users consider the road condition before they go along at home and put some things like that, but those that don't, you need to post them and protect our roads. Um, the roads list proposing is in front of you. Um, all right, is there any questions?
No.
I think next, it's gonna cool off.
Yeah.
So we're gonna be okay for a week or so. I I projected March seventeen, when I put together this number of people requesting this.
How's it look for potholes this year? How's it look for potholes this year?
Uh, some are deep and wide.
Plenty of them around. The frost, where's the frost this stuff? The fro- the frost is tough this year.
It's a good thing you guys are paving Cadence Road this year because there's like a goo goo in the road.
I think they're going up to your street.
We're going from.
I think they're only going up to your street.
Uh, the railroad tracks.
Oh, up to the railroad tracks.
And then my street.
Oh, I know.
Maybe if they get to it.
I'd like to move that we allow Dennis Cox, head of the board director, to propose weight restrictions on the road listed not from the twenty-five seventeen or agenda item twenty-five seventeen from March seventeen, two thousand twenty-five into the twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-five, or sooner if conditions allow.
Second?
We'll get second, all in favor. Thank you. All right. Twenty-five eighteen. Oh, that's right. Twenty-five eighteen, consideration any appropriate action to on awarding the bid for a new tractor replacing the two thousand John Deere.
Okay, um, I'm here tonight asking permission to purchase a new coyote tractor from Tomsom Tractor, new business in town a couple of years ago, um, to replace our twenty-four-year-old unit. Um, it's used chiefly at the uh recreation complex for fieldwork. Um, the unit is low bid and that's the only question.
It's approximately eight hundred dollars over bid, over what's budgeted. But in the previous purchase, we had a sidewalk machine and we saved over seven thousand dollars there, so it'll come out and wash. Still the town's favorite. Sorry.
You're replacing tractor?
We're gonna keep them both right now, but the, the, the current tractor, um, some of the equipment on it isn't able to produce by that unit anymore, the tractor doesn't power as well as we used to, excuse me, or empower. Like anything that's twenty-four years old, it's, where do we start and stop putting maintenance to it possible? As it finally turns up on its last leg, we won't put any more.
I didn't know if there's something that we were gonna trade in or.
No, we weren't going to trade it. There's time when, um, the transfer station can still use the old one. It makes sense to still use the old one for certain tasks rather than take that brand new one out and do something out there that would be detrimental to that, but soon as you own, be smart about it, make the new one last goes on, sort of proposals. The trading would be very minimal, it even didn't make sense.
Any questions? Or a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, Patty, I just want to let you know that I'm taking out the replacing the two thousand John Deere because he's keeping both vehicles. So, um, I make a motion to award the bid for a new tractor by Coyote, Tocsum Tractor in the amount of thirty thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars.
Second. Move in second, babe? In unanimous, thank you.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Twenty-five nineteen, consideration any appropriate action to accept two thousand nine hundred seventy-four dollars and sixty-three cents from the main department of public safety for reimbursement of over, excuse me, overtime costs related to the Lewiston shooting.
Hi, Chris McGowan, fire chief. A couple of months ago, a not really grant, one reimbursement came across my desk where they were reimbursing all the agencies that responded to Lewiston for the shooting. So, I, it covers the shooting night and then the day and a half afterwards during the manhunt. So we were awarded twenty-nine hundred seventy-four dollars and sixty-three cents, so I'm just here to accept that. The one caveat is they, it was explicit in the grant that the money has to go back into your overtime line. They didn't want you to go out and spend it on something, so that's where it will go.
All right.
I would move to accept two thousand nine hundred seventy-four dollars and sixty-three cents from the main department of public safety for reimbursement of overtime costs related to the Lewiston shooting.
Second. Move in second in all favor? In unanimous, all right, stay right there.
I'm gonna stay right.
Twenty-five dash twenty, consideration any appropriate action to award a bid for the purchase of a new boat and tractor.
Uh, boat, trailer, motor. So, I heard boat, we were talking about tractors.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. This is twenty-four years old, this one's twenty-nine, so.
Thinking incrementally, sorry.
Our boat is, uh, technically is currently out of service. Um, there's a rather large hole in the lower unit that we've already repaired once. I think the quote was like seven thousand dollars to repair it again. And they said it probably went last, it only lasted us a year and a half last time or two years, somewhere around there. So in this year's capital budget, we were gonna do garage door motors and springs. We had a couple of springs break two years ago. Derek at the time asked me how much it was to replace all the springs, there's two springs on each door, front and back. We're talking like twenty-eight springs and then the motors, so I gave him a price for that. We haven't broken any since then, uh, it's about thirty-eight hundred dollars to replace one when it breaks. But given the certain circumstances surrounding the boat and where that's an emergency vehicle and we do use it a lot, we always have two to three actual true emergencies on the river every year. Uh, I think it's more prudent and wise to spend our, uh, capital money on replacing the boat that is currently twenty-nine years old. The boat's in fairly good shape, but it is showing some cracks in the welds. So if you went to all the scenes, you could start seeing the cracks in the weld, um, and the motor issue, obviously. So our plan would be to, um, buy a boat that's very similar, similar to what Brunswick has, it's not very extravagant. Uh, you'll notice in my letter that that doesn't include some incidental items like a Garmin and some spotlights, but I'll work with Mark to get those. Uh, so this is supposed for just the boat owner and trailer. And I am recommending Clark Marine on Manchester, which was the lowest one, and they're, they're all the same boat, the same owner, so.
Any questions?
When do you, when would you pick it up?
I think they can have it ready by April. And then my plan would be to work with Mark to figure out where we want to advertise, probably a steel bid for the old unit. Like we did with the, we'll pick up trouble. Uh, we'll sell that, we'll sell that, so. I'd like to have it before ice, before, um, April, Mayish, so.
Ready?
Uh, I make a motion to accept the bid to purchase a new boat, motor and trailer from Clark's Marine from Manchester Marine in the amount of thirty-two thousand two hundred and nineteen dollars and eleven cents.
Second. Move in second in all favor? Motion carries unanimously.
Awesome, thank you.
Staff day, staff development day.
Call a trade, call a trade.
True. Push him overboard, find out.
Any ready to talk about the old business?
Yeah, they have two old business items, the first one is a question to Mark. What was the attorney's response regarding the attendance policy for committees from twenty-five dash eleven? Is it a policy or an ordinance?
The attorney said it could be done as a policy, so I didn't try to draft it for this meeting, knowing it would be full.
You'll prepare that for the next meeting.
Right, and then the fact it doesn't have to be, go to town meetings, so I thought would save it for the next meeting.
Sure, no problem. And my second item of old business was us to continue the discussion of informing committees they should not take public positions on pending legislation or grants, but should submit such letters to the board for approval. There seems to be some repetitive action by committees to, to want to watch what's happening with legislation and make public comment and represent the town. And we want to make sure that's not any committee's charge to do that. So, can we just send a letter to all the chairs? Can we just let them know that we just want to be clear that that's not in the charge for each of the committees, can we do that?
I'd get a call into the town attorney to ask him that one, but I suspect he's gonna say if you wanted, like for instance, maybe we'd do board and committee policy. So we'd talk about attendance at meetings, talk about, um, probably getting prior select board approval before taking public positions on, um, whether it be grants or legislation or anything else.
Okay, that works for me, that we just have it in a policy somewhere. And then communicate it, because it's coming to us hearsay that people are writing letters and they're representing the town, but they might be in opposition to what we as a board have have sent to our legislator, legisla- legislators. And so I just want to make sure that we're all representing the town in the same way that, and not just each committee making up their own decisions. If that makes sense, anybody?
No.
Everybody agrees?
Very much so.
So, you'll come up with that policy for us to look at, after you talk to the attorney?
Right, I'll draft a policy, because we have to get your agenda for your next meeting over, but, um, next Wednesday or Thursday. Depending how quick with the attorney gets back to get the meeting out.
Maybe two weeks later, yeah, that's not a problem.
If he can look at it in time, we'll be finished.
It would just add that to the attendance policy, too, that would be great. Okay, I don't have anything else, that was the old business.
All right.
We don't have exactly the session tonight, do we?
Nope.
Do it.
Motion to adjourn.